I think we're just waiting on Josh to finalize.
Relax.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, welcome everyone to the Lincolnville Select Board Meeting. It is the 13th of February. And before we get going, Karen, would you read the quote of the evening?
I'd be glad to. "We don't stop playing because we grow old. We grow old because we stop playing." George Bernard Shaw.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I would like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Sure.
Susan Silvario, Comp Plan Review Committee and the Heart and Soul Project. And I just want to give you a little tiny update, but mostly I want to start by saying thank you for making our launch possible. We are only just begun introducing this process to the town. And thanks to David Kinney for securing that space for us and opening the door and giving up his Sunday afternoon and getting all the technology, audiovisual equipment going. That takes a lot of doing. We appreciate that. Thanks to Steve Hand for giving us a great kickoff and welcome to everyone. Thanks to Mike Ray as always for showing up to all the planning meeting team. And of course Cindy Dunham, who's the chair of that town-appointed team. So, you know, as you know, we are just beginning. There was a great turnout. We put posters all over town. It was in the newspaper, it was a bulletin board. We're trying to find how we can reach everyone. That's our next question for Phase Two. We know that it's going to be a challenge. The reason we're doing the Community Heart and Soul Process is a survey might net about 10% of the population, if you're really lucky. We know people don't go to meetings. A lot of people don't go to meetings. We were really happy. There were families there with their children and there were high school students. But we've only just begun to try to find a way to reach out to everyone in our community. So if you have any advice, we'd be happy to hear it and we would welcome anyone to work with us. Meet for coffee, meet for tea at the library, and we're looking forward to meeting with everybody.
Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to bring up a non-agenda item? Let's see, nothing. Let's move along to the Administrator's Report.
Winter that never seemed to really arrive now seems to be taking a hiatus. And so tensions may soon focus on our less-than-stellar gravel roads and mud season. We're likely to be out posting roads, even though long-range forecast has winter coming back towards the end of the month. But next couple of days could be challenging. Outside of that, everything's on the agenda or will be part of your budget deliberations later this week.
Sounds good. Any questions for David?
Good question.
All right.
Dave, have we heard anything bad from LCI? Have they been in touch with us in LA?
Couple of weeks ago, I had some communication with Mr. Henzie. But nothing definitive or solid, you know? It's just like, yep, we know and...
Because I know that they've got some grant deadlines coming up.
Yes, I like the prompt then that we're not forgotten.
Good. Thanks.
All right, thanks for that. Let's move along to upcoming meeting and announcements.
All meetings are here at the Town Office unless announced otherwise. The Heart and Soul Team is meeting tomorrow, Tuesday, February 24th, noon at the library. Budget Committee and Select Board will be meeting on Wednesday and Thursday evenings of this week, the 15th and 16th, at 6:00 p.m. Town Office will be closed on Monday, February 20th, in Observance of Presidents' Day. Planning Board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, February 22nd, 7:00 p.m. Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is scheduled to meet Thursday, February 23rd, at 6:30. And the Select Board meets next for a regular session on Monday, February 27th, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? See, none. Let's move along to the meeting minutes from the 20th, 23rd. Which date is right? I think it says the 24th.
This says 24th.
I want the Board to approve the January 24th, 2023 meeting minutes as presented. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And we have a liquor license renewal application for McLaughlin's Lobster Shack. We do have a representative here tonight. Does anyone wish to ask any questions? If no questions, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one thing about the application.
Would you care to come up to the podium, please, to answer?
So Josh?
Hi. This may be more of a question for David. But on page, let's see, 311 of the application number 10, is the licensee applicant for the license receiving, yada, yada, basically does... Will anyone benefit from this? And your mortgage credit line? But it needs to be related to liquor, so is the answer actually no for that? Because I don't see any reason why that should be...
The question is, is that the question about any law enforcement officers being involved?
No, it's not that one.
What page is that on?
Uh, 3 of 11.
So I'll just read it. Is a licensee or applicant for a license receiving, directly or indirectly, any money, credit, thing of value, endorsement of commercial paper, guarantee of credit, or financial assistance of any sort from any person or entity within or without the state, if the person or entity is engaged directly or indirectly in the manufacture, distribution, wholesale, storage, or transportation of liquor? So I think it says no.
It should be no.
Yeah.
Yes, it shouldn't be no. That, I think that that does refer to people who brew beer.
Okay.
Or distribute liquor.
Yeah.
Or something like that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So we'll just make sure that that correction is made before.
I think Rick will be all over that.
Alrighty. So I will entertain a motion then. Thank you, Rick.
I move the Board to approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by Beachfront Inc. Doing Business as McLaughlin's Lobster Shack. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much.
Question?
Come on.
Okay, I just wanted to know, could you please hold it at the desk instead of mailing it? I'll pick it up in the morning.
Yep.
Sure.
Because I have to, I have to go to Florida on Wednesday.
I'm so sorry.
So I'm not going to be able to...
You really just had to say that, didn't you?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Should we hold off on Agenda Item Number Seven? I'm assuming Rory is going to be...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind pushing it down.
She's well aware of when the meeting was planned for.
What does the Board want to do?
Why don't we wait? She told me earlier she had a migraine.
Ooh.
She's suffering from a migraine, so...
Okay. Well, we can always table it too, if we have to. So consensus from the Board that we'll just keep bumping it? All right, well, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Lakes and Ponds Updated Draft Communication for Us. Gary, do you wish to address the Board?
So I'm Gary Beliezen, Chair of the Lakes and Ponds Committee. I'll tell you the story of the options. At our last meeting, you suggested that we strengthen the letter. So I added some verbiage to the end of it that talked about the possibility of an ordinance as we review the annual, the annual surveys of the floats and docks. I then shared that with Dave and Susan and asked for any comments that they might have. And the thought was that maybe the letter would communicate better if it were shorter and more direct. Because once we added the additional language, it was well over one page. You probably need a two-sided, a two-sided letter in the mailing. So we thought that we would give you both options. Susan drafted the shorter one, picking up some of the language from the original letter, but just making it a more direct communication.
Yeah, thank you for that. Questions for Gary? Would someone care to make a motion then?
I move to have the Option A letter as prepared by the Lakes and Ponds Committee regarding unencapsulated polished styrene flotation to be placed on a town letterhead for our signatures and then mailed to freshwater shorefront property owners.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Yes?
I actually support Option B. I feel like people will appreciate a little more context to it. It's hard to know what, how people will fall on, if they just want it to be short and sweet or longer. I would rather give them more information than less.
Lucky for you, if this motion fails, you can make that argument.
I picked that motion because it should sweep and it's in the round.
Yeah.
I'm not going to disagree with what you just said. But this is our second time around. And I think, I think it just needed that.
Yeah, it's punchy in all the right ways, so yeah.
For some, for some people, it will be their first time around because we have had a, I won't say a fair amount, but numerous properties change hands in the last four years since their initial letter went out. But...
It does get right to the point, though.
Oh, it does. It's direct. I prefer Option B as well.
That's me, very fully.
All right, well, so we have a motion for Option A on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Option A? All those not in favor of Option A? Well, if it had gone either way, I don't think we would have lost.
Doesn't matter.
But, um, yes. All right, thank you all very much. Gary, anything else you want to add?
Now, we debated in our group too about the two kinds of communications. And when you have a letter, a letter written by committee, they tend to get longer.
For sure.
So this is sort of an incisive decision.
Yep. Well, thank you. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Gary.
And moving along, David, would you care to give a little preamble of this?
Sure.
Heart and Soul Contract Amendments.
Back in December, the Board approved an agreement with CEI LLC, CEI Consultants LLC, Catherine Ingerham-Cat, as everybody knows her, who's the coach for the Heart and Soul Team. Been here numerous times. And that agreement had an original contract fee of up to $16,000. And she has offered to change that up to $10,000. And I took the liberty of telling her it wasn't necessary for her to come from Prescott to Lincolnville to make that pitch for a contract amendment in that direction. Susan and Cindy, who are both on the Heart and Soul Team, are here. I think the Heart and Soul Team fully supports the recommended change. They're going to speak up if I'm incorrect. I don't see a whole lot of downside to it.
All right. Would someone care to make a motion, please?
I move with the Select Board, except with gratitude, the offer of Catherine Ingerham and CEI Consultants to lower the fee amount from $16,000 to $10,000.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? We have a comment from the audience to examine. Sure, yeah, come on.
Just a word of explanation. I think it's interesting to note that many other towns who undertake the Heart and Soul Process, the first phase includes hiring and onboarding a project coordinator. And there's usually a substantial salary that goes along with that. Also, they set up offices. We are incredibly fortunate in this town to have an incredible team of all volunteers. And we've been using the Lincolnville Library. So our, our costs have been absolutely minimal right now. It's a two-year process, so my understanding, I just wanted to confirm, this, these funds will stay in this account that was requested by the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. So in the event that we have a lot of money left over, you know, we might need a little technical assistance. I'm just like to put that out now.
Sure, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. And moving along to Agenda Item Number 10, we have Agenda Item Presented by Selectman Garrettson and Selectman Ray to discuss a participatory budget proposal.
Yeah, that's a mouthful, isn't it?
We're trying to find a better, like, snap your name.
I'm proud I couldn't stumble.
Every time I try, I stumble. This is why I'll give it to you, Josh.
Oh, no, please.
Oh, man. Okay, so that PB Budget Proposal request is simply a request that we would like added to the, to the budget to the next time for consideration. From what I, our conversations with David, Josh and I met with David a week and a half ago, more or less?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we confirmed that we were within deadlines and there were, as far as I know, in making this request. You got a proposal in front of you. I don't want to make a sales pitch now. I'll make a sales pitch later, you know? But, but I will note that those pieces of paper I threw at the very end was supposed to be attached to this whole section, that proposal. And my, it didn't, the email didn't work or something like that, or I just fell down on the job. So we got it now.
All right.
And I'll just add, so, so the City of Rockland did the same concept and they awarded, they awarded $30,000 to organizations that had projects that would benefit the town from ARPA funds to explain to the, everyone here what this is about. And so there were three grants, I believe there's four grants for $5,000 and one grant for $10,000. And people in residents of Rockland, I think 12 and up, could vote on what they wanted their town, their, their city to fund. And they ultimately gave $5,000 grants to the Rockland Community Fruit and Nut Trees, Trekkers, the Midcoast Restorative Justice Project, Mount Main, and $10,000 to the Rockland Rotary Club's universally-inclusive, all-aborde playground. And so we, we see this as a really great opportunity to use just a very small portion of the ARPA funds to fund projects that the community finds really important. Out of the $220,000 that our town received, I'm assuming the, the rest of what we have, I'm assuming the Board will, will end up putting that towards lowering property taxes. And I would support that. But to, just to take a small amount of that and put it directly in the hands of, of our residents to think of creative projects that can benefit the town, it seems like a really great opportunity to also bring in more people into our, our process. And perhaps through, through this participatory budgeting process, we could even bring in more residents to serve on boards and committees and be more engaged with, with their government.
Okay.
I just want to point out one thing. If you decide to study this further, there's a little bit, I just noticed I put something confusing in this proposal here. And that is if you look on the first page, and where it talks about a timeline, you might want to switch two and three. The, the third might want to come before the second, the second might follow the point number three. It kind of, that's kind of a fluid thing. But this is, there, there are a lot, there would be details to work out. I'm sure there are a lot of devils in there.
Thoughts?
How can I, and I'm asking one of both of you to answer this question. How can I tell a taxpayer, I'm sorry, but I'm asking you for money to do X when we had $20,000 that this X qualified for, but we gave that to a group because they wanted to do this? How am I going to do that? How am I going to answer that question? Because we, we've got projects that we've put on hold due to the coronavirus. Some have been funded sometime. How am I going to do the straight face test with a taxpayer? And I think that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
How am I going to do that?
Oh, it's great. It's a very, it's a valid question, definitely, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying that this isn't a good idea. Don't, don't get me wrong, okay?
I'm not getting it wrong, yeah.
But I really would like to know how I'm going to look at a taxpayer, especially somebody who is struggling to pay their taxes.
Yeah, sure, definitely, yeah, yeah. Yeah, well, I guess my first reaction, if somebody came up and said that to me, I would say that, well, yeah, 20 grand is not going to your taxes or to alleviate your taxes. However, there are, in this, however many budget we have, $7 million budget we have, there are many things that aren't going directly to your, to alleviate your taxes, but they are for projects for the town. I'd say this is one more project for the town, for the greater community. And it was chosen differently than we normally choose these projects. But they're still, we know, it's chosen in the same way in the sense that it was chosen by a vote and approved at town meeting. So, but the proposal, the proposing is different. Rather than coming from the Budget Committee, Select Board, Town Meeting, it's going, but, Select Board, because I, I don't, it'll be in the drafts, it'll be Budget Committee, Select Board, and then go to a popular vote and then town meeting to see if, to ratify that decision.
I would, I would just add two things.
You'd probably make it briefly than mine, hopefully.
Sorry. So when someone shows up to town meeting and, and we present them with a budget of X number of dollars, hundreds of thousands, millions of dollars, they can't pick apart, they could, I guess, we could spend all day, all night picking apart the budget at town meeting, but generally people are voting on these very large line items and don't have an opportunity to really weigh in on, on small projects like this. So I would say to that person, unlike our, our, our budget process, which is already very democratic and inclusive here, the residents are directly voting for everything. We're simply giving residents that, that power to do that. And number two, one option that residents can vote for is put the money back into lowering our taxes. So if the majority of Lincolnville thinks this is not a good idea, Josh and Mike, we would rather have, have this go to lowering our taxes, then that's an option. But that's, that's up to them. And ARPA funds, I guess, I see, I'd see one of their goals is to enhance infrastructure of the community, not, not just lower property taxes. In the final rule, they said you can use it to lower taxes, but I, I guess I just feel at the very least, we can use it as an opportunity to, to give the residents something back that's not just lowering their taxes, which is important. And we're doing that with the vast majority, most likely, but...
Well, I, I want to take issue with that because it's both presumptive and putting words in other Select Board members' mouths to assume that myself or anyone else on the Board would make that recommendation to use ARPA funds.
I'm just going...
To reduce, I mean, looking at the entire budget, and I guess I would go back, my first question is, in that workshop that we had regarding our priorities, you know, we had, what, three or four pages of in the works, not yet funded or partially funded, you know? And so how does this sort of jump to the head of the line ahead of all of those other projects, which are already in the queue, have been approved by the voters? You know, we're not even talking about reducing taxes, just taking what I feel like is being discussed as extra money. From my perspective, I don't see that we have extra money. I also feel like it, this feels like reinventing the wheel and then some, you know? I mean, at every step of our budget process, we have public commentary, opportunity for the public to participate, opportunity for the public to weigh in on all of those little projects. And also, our budget process doesn't preclude local groups from submitting requests to participate in our budget process. And so, you know, with all of the best intentions that I see this being proposed with, it feels like asking for, what is it, 13 or 14% of what we've received in ARPA funds to just get set aside for an unknown purpose at this time, which is counter to our budget process or essentially putting on, you're asking us to put on hold $20,000 to then create a process, create a website, create a this, create a committee, create all of that to then decide how to spend those monies. And we're literally about to step into the meeting to do just that with abundant opportunities for the public to participate. So, well, for, I mean, so, you know, it's sort of like these, these different filters that I filter it through. It's, I don't see this jumping to the head of the line of our priority list, of those pages and pages of projects that are staring us down. And then, secondly, I feel like we have a really, excuse me, clear and transparent and democratic process by which we approve the budget.
Can I, can I just respond to that?
Sure.
So, yes, it is presumptuous of me. I'm going from our past behavior as a Board last year, putting 100% of our, of the first tranche of ARPA funds in. I could be totally wrong and we could do something else entirely, but I'm just going from what I think is the most likely, most prudent course of action, really, that our Board could do with those ARPA funds. This is a really intimidating process to a lot of people, to submit something to the Lincolnville Select Board, sit here and defend a budget item that no one's ever done before and have us tell them that that's, you know, potentially irresponsible and, you know, we're not going to fund that. That's scary to a lot of people. And the whole idea behind this, a big part of it is, is to lower that bar where, where people can, can interact with their government in a way that, that feels less, less freaky, I guess. To the point that we have, we have a, a budget process and norms of how we do this, that's absolutely true, but ARPA funds are not normal. It's, it's a once-in-a-generation influx of, influx of money that, that will probably never happen again on that scale. So I don't, I don't think you can really compare that to our typical budget process. And, you know, things that we have, important projects that we've already funded that are on the list, those already have funding. So this isn't part of that. And, and we're not asking to, to jump something to the front of the list in our budget process. It's simply, let's not spend $20,000 on the ARPA funds during this budget process. Let's, let's just not spend it, not, let's spend it on this specific thing. That's kind of a important distinction.
Yeah, can I say two things?
Well, I'm just...
Oh, I'm sorry. I just...
It'd be nice to hear from the other members of the Board if they have things to say.
You might be heard.
Steve?
I would, we, in our priority discussion we had months ago, a month or so ago, a follow-up discussion we've had to that, was blown away with the fact that we've got tons and tons of priorities that aren't funded, that we're spending time on. To me, and, and we've had people sitting in this room asking us why we, why we haven't done those. To me, and, and we've had people sitting in this room, uh, asking us why we, why we haven't done those things yet. To me, it's irresponsible of this group, in my opinion, uh, to take money set aside, even though I, I think the idea, the participatory approach is a good idea. We have stuff that, that we have people expecting us to have already completed and we haven't. So, I, I find that we need to, uh, keep the money in the budget, not set it aside at this time. For us. Along with that, I think this year is gonna be a challenging budget year as we develop the budget. And every dollar, every penny, uh, is gonna count, especially for those of its income, which we have a lot of income.
Okay, thank you. Kurt, did you have anything?
Yeah, before Mike.
No.
Okay. Mike, that key.
Well, yeah, there's the point, there's two points I was gonna make is that, uh, I disagree that, um, if this, if something like this were to be adopted, and it would be something like this, certainly, I can't imagine that everything that I wrote in that proposal would come to fruition, there'd have to be some changes. Nobody gets it right on the first time, would be that, uh, it's not jumping to the front of the line of that long list that we saw. And, um, secondly, I'm not so sure lately that when you say, yes, it is, it is an open, transparent democratic process that this town has developed over the years, and we certainly go with that. I'm not so sure it's working well. And, uh, it couldn't use some enhancement. And, um, as Josh said, we lower the bar perhaps to allow more people in, to make the decisions on how their money is spent. Third thing, I'd say, getting back to what you said about what we, what would I say to that person, the same, uh, um, David, David and Vern ran some numbers, and based on last year's budget, uh, twenty thousand dollars removed from that budget, it amounted to four dollars and fifty cents on a hundred thousand dollar, on property valued at a hundred thousand dollars. Five dollars isn't chump change, but a cup of coffee is five dollars. There you go.
But if, if you're saying it's not jumping to the head of the list, you've already earmarked twenty thousand dollars that we don't wanna, that we quote unquote, don't want to use for anything but a project that's selected, in my mind, that goes to the head of the list. Because we've already taken twenty thousand dollars, set it aside, and we're not gonna use it for already, for already targeted or already, um, agreed upon, uh, yes, we need to do this project, uh, because there's gonna be someone's selected project, and that's going to the head of the list. I don't see how anybody can convince me different. It's going to the head of the list.
Well, it's going to the head because the town voted on it.
Because we've taken twenty thousand dollars that we've set aside, or that we're potentially gonna set aside, that we could use for these other projects. So, I don't, I don't see the rationale there. So, in my, on my side of the table, I, I'm not sure I can get behind this.
I'm not asking you to now.
What's that?
I'm not asking you to now. I'm, I'm suggesting that we put it on and for discussion when we deal with budget requests.
Add it to the draft budget, but not say we're, we're going.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not in any way saying, because that would be jumping the shark, or that would be getting ahead of the budget process that we have, and I don't wanna do that at all. Yeah. No, I'm, I'm just suggesting that, uh, this be added to next week's budget presentation schedule. Simple as that. And.
This week.
You mean in two days.
Two days, yeah.
Moments.
Why should I?
But a moment, but a moment.
Yeah, yeah, but a moment away. And, uh, and, and then we could shoot it down in flames. Have at it, you know? Not to say put it on. That's all.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Excellent way to refocus the group conversation. But, yeah, you know, I, I, yes.
I'll, I'll take the compliment.
For us not to have mission creep of the purpose of the draft proposal being put before us tonight. I will say that, um, I think it should be hard for us to spend other people's money.
Yeah.
And we've had this conversation before where we've been ripping our hair out of how, how do we get participation? Rockland had, what, just over three hundred respondents?
Thirty-five, yeah.
And so, they're spending thirteen, or sorry, three and a half percent of their ARPA funds based on just over three hundred votes in a town whose population is, what?
Five thousand?
I think we'd be way better.
It's gotta be more than that, but, but, you know, so, so, you know, I, again, going back to reinventing the wheel, is the issue creating a, a mini-me budget process within the budget process, the answer? Or do we have a different conversation about how do we make it more attractive for people to come in here and care about where their tax dollars are being allocated? And I, yeah, I, I just, I don't see us having, I don't see us having extra money. But to your point, Mike, it's, that's not the, that's not the, the, the conversation at hand. The conversation is, is this board interested in including it in the budget? To be discussed and torn apart. Further, further, like everything else, everything else. I mean, this will not be unique in any way, shape or form.
Looked at it as giving us all an opportunity, forty-eight hours, to really come up with good arguments against this. Or for, um, I think there are good arguments for it myself, but not, I was like, I'm giving everybody two days to come up with some really killer arguments to not, to knock me down. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I feel I already have, but.
Well, with all, with all due respect, Kurt, I'm not so sure you have, but, uh, I'll, I'll listen, I'll listen to you in two days.
Yeah, but you couldn't come up with a real good thing for me to look right at a taxpayer and tell them why I needed more money for them, because I set aside twenty thousand dollars and didn't do this over here, which really needs to be done, town infrastructure enhancement and/or maintenance?
Well.
And, and this is not the time to argue about it, maybe Wednesday night is.
Well.
But.
Yeah, I mean, and to Steve's point, you know, agenda item number seven, we've had this conversation how many times about how come we haven't built sidewalks?
Yeah.
I don't know, twenty thousand dollars could go participate in that conversation pretty quickly, you know, so.
Get to three yards.
So, I just, I guess, you know, the real question is, at this point, is, does someone wish to make a motion towards the end of, uh, your proposal?
I will, sure. Yeah. Uh, I'm gonna have the request for funding of a participatory budget proposal added to next week's budget presentation schedule.
Can I ask you to perhaps amend that to, to this week's?
This week's.
Sorry, wrote that.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Technically, you were correct.
It was true. So, yeah, so, so amended, yeah, to this week's budget schedule.
I'll second.
You're gonna second that? Okay, so we're clear on the motion?
Yeah.
This week's budget schedule. Motion and seconded, just further discussion.
I wanted to, but just like to not to, regardless of any action you take tonight, obviously, you haven't even seen your first draft of the budget. And in the meetings to come, you're going to have opportunity to comment on usage of American Rescue Plan Act monies and other motions to be made to either use it or not use it. So, if that was your source, pretty much no matter what you do tonight, it's gonna be kinda mute.
Right. Well, and things can be added and will be removed inevitably also. So, yes. Uh, all right, all those in favor? Those opposed? Thank you very much. But to David's point, the conversation is still live.
It always is. Thank you.
But thank you for the conversation.
Oh, sure.
Uh, let's move along to the Waldo County woodshed. We have an updated, or we need to update our agreement. David or Mike, do you wanna elaborate on this at all?
Yeah, well, uh, yeah, I asked David to put this on, on the, uh, agenda, and I, I didn't, I didn't know until David looked in the files that, that this does need to be updated, it's not a day. But that's not the reason I brought it up to you guys, uh, is that unfortunately, there's been another instance of, of theft at the woodshed, you can have to go, and, uh, maybe two weeks ago, uh, suddenly, uh, uh, half a cord was stolen out of those baskets that we had, yeah. And, um, uh, we confirmed as best we could through their dispatch inventory that it was theft and not somebody picking it up, coming late or something like that. They had already picked it up someplace else. There's a very, very, very slight chance that it could have been somebody who was scheduled to pick up the wood there, picked it up in Sears-Mont, had her brother-in-law pick it up in Lincolnville, and they weren't communicating, some silly, you know, that's very, that's possible, but anyway, I think theft is going on there. And it, you know, it behooves me to bring it up to the board saying, I mean, I don't wanna see theft going on at town property. I don't want that to be a magnet for criminal activity, and it's going to perhaps increase or be known as a place where you can get away with it, so consequently. I'd like to suggest to the board that when we update this agreement, we ask, we require that the woodshed provide security for that. The way I see it, I see it's pretty darn simple. I'm at that depot all the time, that building all the time. All you gotta do is buy sixteen feet of chain link fence, and six feet high is better than four. And just tack it on one end of the open, you've got a fourteen-foot opening, tack it on one end, string it across, chain it, lock it or something, or the other way. Actually, you probably bind it by an extra eight feet, because you have to, uh, secure those baskets that are full. Another eight feet of wood laying on top of baskets, chain, another, you know, fence, fence on top of it, chain down would do the trick too. Anyway, I would suggest that we require that of them.
Some type of, a way to lock it.
Some, yeah, some, yeah, exactly. I don't know what the best way is, but that's the only thing I can think of right now.
I guess I agree with you. Because it's somewhat open, there's gonna be a certain amount of people that are gonna try that anyway, but we can't allow this to happen on town property. I agree one hundred percent. Like, did we, did someone have cameras over there?
Oh, there are two cameras over there now. But, but this happened the week after we had taken down the cameras and realized that all the batteries had died.
Okay.
Okay. So, while we're floxing around trying to figure out how we're gonna buy batteries, uh, and somebody comes in, you know?
Okay, yeah, I, we gotta do something, you know? To protect the wood, it, it's being taken from someone who really needs it.
Exactly.
You know, but to protect that is one thing. The other thing is, is to protect us as a town, we can't have people stealing stuff on our property, on the town.
Or getting used to taking things, yeah.
Sure. Agreed, Mike, agreed. We gotta do something, and, and I guess that should somehow be reflected in the, in the agreement.
Yeah, that's the only way I can think.
Yeah.
At their other sites, are they having trouble? And if so, are they, what are they doing there?
Well, okay, so I know that, uh, one of the other sites, I can't remember the town, um, they've had some stuff stolen. Sears-Mont of the main yard, down, uh, the Sproul's lumber, down there, oh, that's open, you can drive in, and they've had some serious vandalism there and theft. Um, they've got cameras and all that, but it's open. The rest of the places, as far as I know, are, are behind, are, are locked, you know, they're behind gates. There are, uh, transfer stations between the locks, or one is at somebody's house. Yeah.
So, the, um, if I recall correctly, we talked to somebody from the woodshed there last year. I was here for me, and they talked or whatever, and they had talked about not wanting to worry about security.
The message would stand, right?
Right, because it, and, and their view was if somebody is, is, feels like they have to steal it, they're probably desperate enough that they need it. That was their, so I'm, I agree with the piece of, if it's on town property, we need to be thinking about, okay, it should be secure, et cetera. But I, I questioned, if we tell them they have to, are they gonna, I mean, maybe they shouldn't look for another location.
Well, that's my.
And how do we control access? Because they typically say, yeah, go pick it up. If it's at a transfer station like it is in some areas, it's open from this hour to this hour, and boom.
Doesn't there have to be a representative?
Well, I'll tell you, yeah, the way it works is that, uh, if somebody wants wood, they have to call a direct, a number, and that dispatcher will assign the various depots around again. And each depot has hours that they are open, that they will accept those clients. And in Lincolnville's case, it's from seven to nine AM on Saturday mornings. And, uh, and there are three people here in Lincolnville, uh, before, sorry, four volunteers who we rotate, and we meet those people. And, uh, so, and but we know ahead of time, we were texted their names and telling that those people will be coming to pick up a quarter, quarter wood, and somebody help them to get it in their car and refill the baskets. To your point of whether the woodshed would say, well, we're done with Lincolnville, you're making us, they won't. I, I mean, I, I've worked with these guys for years, and they won't do that. They, they, they need a place like this.
So, are we, that aside, are we at a point where we should talk about, we, we store things there?
Yeah.
We have culverts, we have a ramp for down to the harbor, we have product for roads, we, you know, we have a lot of stuff over there. To the right person, that stuff is very valuable. Should that be gated? Should we, is this something we should talk about? I, I'm not saying inflict this type of pain on the taxpayers for the woodshed.
Yeah.
But we don't know if we lost anything over there. You know what I mean? So, I, that's just a thought, that when stuff like this is a conversation, that's the type of thought, thought process that I have. What about these other sites that you say that the woodshed is not experiencing? What are they doing? Are they closed down?
Well, like I said, they're, they're closed down. They're like a North Horse County Wonder, they're done on Nevada.
So, that's gated?
That's gated, right. Um, Warren, Warren.
And that's gated, in Warren.
Too, yeah. So, those guys aren't having problems. I know Brooks had some stolen.
Yeah.
Last week. And Sears-Mont, uh, where there's the main yard, so there's, you know, the tree length and a lot of baskets full of cut stuff. And, uh, you know, gas has been, uh, a vehicle was, uh, gas was stolen from a vehicle recently.
Drilled a hole, right?
Yeah, some drilled a hole in a gas tank.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right.
Yeah, right. Um, but, uh, yeah, so, that's open as well. Well, you know, there are cameras everywhere, but that doesn't mean.
We're supposed to video that.
Did they?
Yeah, pick a truck.
Does it make?
Oh, the truck, yeah.
Does it make sense as a first step to include a requirement for securing the woodshed's product, the wood, first, before we get into that sort of bigger can of worms of the logistics and implications of us having a gate and the ripple effect it could have with our contractors, et cetera? Um, and see, I would like to believe that a, an additional layer of deterrent would be enough to prevent that kinda low-hanging fruit behavior first and see where that goes.
So, I'm sorry that I made you do this, but the baskets, are they sitting off to the side and once that you guys have?
They are, yeah, yeah, you've got the, the shed, the, the shed, okay.
But they're off to the side.
They're off the side, yeah.
No way in here. I'm just thinking, how are you gonna secure the shed and the baskets?
Well, I see, I, I see, I, the way I see it, I do it separately. I would run, run a section of fence.
Yep.
Across the opening, and then treat the basket separately, but taking also a section of fence and just lay it on, lay it on top and strap it down, chain.
Okay, okay.
Something like that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, does that make sense to the board, David? Is that enough for us, or do you wanna put together?
Um, I think we can come up with some language that imparts upon Waldo County Woodshed our desire that their stuff be secured.
Yeah, um, the only, the only question I, the only.
And if they don't like it, they're gonna come back and say, can we change this to this? I mean, I don't think we need to tell them necessarily means and methods, because they may have a better way.
Yeah, sure.
But if you outline what you're. But if you outline what your expectations are so that we don't have to have poor select person Ray reporting to us that Waldo County Woodshed stuff is disappearing.
Yeah, the only suggestion I would make, David, is that if we make it clear, I guess, in that agreement or however we're approaching the woodshed, that surveillance alone isn't good enough, that it has to be physically secured.
Physically.
Secured somehow. I don't know how you write that down or say that.
Yeah.
Just add in another camera, it isn't gonna do it.
What a shame, but thank you for bringing this up to us.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry I had to.
So would someone make a motion, please?
I move the select board to the town administrator, update the agreement with the Waldo County Woodshed to include a method to secure the wood. Seek to have the appropriate representative of the woodshed sign the new agreement and then return a signed copy to the board for consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Nothing, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. Okay, and moving along, we have an update from our last conversation regarding the pier hoist repairs. We were wanting clarification from the harbor committee. And so we have those, that input from their meeting minutes when they discussed it. So I don't know if anyone has any more questions or if someone cares to make a motion.
I move to replace the secondary hoist at the pier with the funds for the project to come from the harbor savings account.
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion.
So, like, looking at Rockport Steels bill, disassemble and remove old winch at town pier, boom truck, and labor onsite installation. I assume that's a typo and that should say removal? Because down at the very bottom, it says exactly the same thing, boom truck, onsite installation.
Yeah, I'm sure it's, well, they're charging their boom truck out at a hundred and fifty an hour and then the people per hour in addition to that.
Is the, so is the, is it still there but not functional? Well, it's still there. It would function if we hadn't disabled it because it's not, you put a load on it, it's gonna go. So it's all intact? Well, except for the rusty part, yep. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Can we sell it?
Boom truck would be needed to pull up of the actual staff or shaft of itself that is mounted on, right? It's gonna be right from the base, which is bolted to the deck, through the deck. It's just, it's a, it's a self-contained, you know, it's a whole unit.
That's all again.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? You go very much. And moving along, select person updates. Kern, do you have an update for us?
Well, Josh and I participated in Miko Solid Waves meeting the other night where we discussed and critiqued and approved a budget.
Wonderful.
Not everybody was happy with it, but it definitely was satisfactory to have stuff in front of us to look at, talk about, and almost didn't. Josh burned right up short. Whoa, whoa, wait a minute.
Keep the meeting going.
Yes, but yes, we do have a budget. I assume that'll be forthcoming with the town.
Great.
And a lot going on down there. It's like running a town. It really is. It really is. People don't understand.
Can I ask these guys a question?
Sure.
Very simple, it's just, how are things running down there? Things going smoothly?
We, we have an interim manager now, and they appear to be running very well. Where we wanna meet more. Some of us wanna meet more. We'll be quarterly now. And the committee, we need to get our committees back engaged, but it isn't going bad compared to what other years.
And, and compared to what else is in the news?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Josh, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, yeah, I do. So assessments, good news, they're being kept flat for, for all the towns. So our assessment's gonna stay the same at ninety-one thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars. Costs have increased substantially, just labor and materials. And so the way we're gonna pay for that is that yellowback prices are going up from two fifty a bag to three dollars a bag. As far as I know, we funded two household hazardous waste days. These are very popular events. We have always just had one a year where you could bring your household hazardous waste to the transfer station and, and half of the cost would be paid for by the facility. But the board felt that it was important to have, have two of them. And the, the last thing that I wanna point out is that, so we have to pump out, pump or treat leachate from the South Quarry in perpetuity. We currently pump it to the Camden Wastewater Treatment Plant. And the price of the cost of this has gone up from a hundred thirty thousand dollars to a hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for this year. It's one of our biggest costs and it's only gonna go up. We have to pay for it forever. So it's something that we should really think seriously about. Someone threw the idea out that maybe we should try to treat it ourselves, build our own mini treatment plant at the transfer station, because since we have to pay for this forever, then maybe that would end up being cheaper. But something that we should all really, you know, think about. It's a huge number and it's, it's not gonna down.
So, so.
The other numbers that have gone just skyrocketing is our guy, the guy that does our transports for our, you know, stuff offsite get to come back to us, you know, with the, with the changes in how he does business and, you know, what are we, what are we gonna do? I mean, you can't not truck the stuff off, you know? So everything has gone up. That's a very good point, Josh. That is something we're gonna be doing for the rest of our lives. So we gotta get creative of what we're doing with this stuff, you know? So we're looking at a lot of options down there, not in just those areas, but everything.
Great.
Everything.
Mike, do you have an update?
No, I don't.
Stop by sometime.
Steve, I know you can, you can give the update for us.
We attended the EMS Performance Review Committee meeting back on January twenty-sixth. It was well-attended with representatives from everywhere. Which was a first for a while, I guess. There's a lot of various topics. One of interest to me was the, the activities that Rockport and I guess Cam did more than anybody in doing some training and getting some EMTs on their staffs. Kurt Hope now has three licensed EMTs. Rockport's in the process. Interesting to see where that goes over time. And we heard a lot from the folks from Northeast Mobile Health regarding need for training and need for legislative efforts to improve the state of EMS in Maine. I agreed to be a delegate to, to go up and testify if need be with the, when this becomes before the legislature. Stephanie actually reached out to me afterwards and said that she might be willing to be the second delegate.
Oh, great. Have her just loop in with me and then I'll make sure that that gets rolling.
Yeah.
Cool.
So overall, there was, there was some other stuff, but it was a, it was a good meeting.
Yeah, it felt promising, which felt great, yeah. Excellent. So I guess we'll move along to the treasurer and payroll warrants, which we need to approve in time.
I moved that the board approve and sign the treasurer's and payroll warrants.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And I think at this point, I, I'd really like Rory to be here. And I mean, we could have a conversation and we could watch a video, but you know, I think if she's not feeling well, then.
So.
It took her a month to get this on the.
Do you wanna, do you wanna come up to the podium?
Yes.
Great. Do you have the video? Can we watch the movie?
Josh has the video.
All right. Hang on one second. Susan, how would you like to address the board?
It's already been mentioned that it's really scary. There are very few people who have the nerve to come in here and, and try to get your attention. Rory has been working on this for over a year. She's a mother, she's a working mother. She, her child has needs, as all children do. She's been trying to get this particular item on the agenda for more, over a month. She, you know, there's several hurdles. You have to get it on the agenda the Wednesday before, and then you know that, what is it, David? Wednesday, Tuesday before, and then there's, you know, she tried, she missed, she thought she had one deadline. You know, have any idea how terrifying this is to people? Josh has the, the video. All she would like to do is for you to have the courtesy to look at what she's talking about.
Sure. Do you wanna, do you wanna speak?
I'm offended, to be real honest with you, because I am one of the most approachable people in this town, have been for many years. And I have had many conversations with Rory at the end of my driveway, some brought on by her, some brought on by me. I don't know why people feel so intimidated in front of a group that is so approachable. Do we run this town efficiently or do we try to? Yes, we do, because we are in it to protect you and you and Rory and everybody else from things that just shouldn't happen. But why someone would say that? Do we have rules and regulations? Yes, we do, because we run this like a municipality. But I cannot understand it. And I take exception to that, because I'm trying to do the best job I can for people like Rory and everybody else in this town. But I take exception to that.
And the only reason why I would suggest tabling is in deference to the individual who requested to ostensibly participate in this conversation. I don't, I don't think it's fair to have a conversation without including the individual who requested it. It's, it's not an effort to avoid the conversation, and you've made that implication multiple times when it comes to center sidewalks or when it comes to sidewalks at all. The, the board isn't not having the conversation. The board has had this conversation multiple times, multiple workshops. We're trying to have the conversation, but there is a process. And, you know, I mean, we can't subvert the process. So it is up to the board, if we wish to just go ahead with this conversation without Rory being here, we can watch the video. The board was about to have that conversation, but you apparently had a very important piece of information to share, but if it's to cast aspersions here, that's not productive.
That's not my intention. That's not my intention. I'm simply advocating for someone who's been really challenged to try to get this on the agenda, and now he's not feeling well.
Which is, that happens. So, select board, do you wish to table it so that Rory can participate in the agenda item that she worked very hard to get on our agenda? Or, or, and, do we wish to watch the video and have a conversation? Or watch the video and then invite Rory back when she can come?
Myself, I'd like to include Rory's allegory in the conversation. It's the right thing to do. And that provides a little bit of context, seven and a half minutes, if, whatever, on, on the screen. I, I've already seen the video myself. It's not gonna tell me a whole heck of a lot. I kinda like to hear something from her as well. So let's invite her back, I guess. Hopefully she'll come next time.
I mean, myself, I mean, stuff happens. I get, you know, life, life happens and it isn't necessarily always convenient to come out on a Monday night in February. I get it.
Just like we tabled the pier host discussion from last meeting to tonight, I'm happy to table that discussion till.
I mean, I'm not opposed to watching the video. I, I have walked down the road, I've walked down the road multiple times with citizens, with DOT representatives. But I'm not opposed to watching the video, but I want to have a constructive conversation.
I think we should, we should hold off. There's no context without someone narrating it.
Right.
It's, it's her video, so why don't we just invite her back in two weeks?
Yeah, and, you know, we're, we have these meetings regularly, so we're, we're here, we're available, and I'm open to having a conversation a hundred percent. I mean, it's, it's a big conversation to have when it's seven to eight hundred dollars a foot to build a sidewalk. But I'm, I'm here for it, for sure. Okay, so we will put it on our next agenda and send an invitation to Rory, give her a heads up.
With Rory.
Let her know that we will be meeting on the twenty-seventh and that she is encouraged to attend. Okay, is there any other business for the select board this evening? If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a final motion.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. Congratulations to those of you who stayed here the whole meeting.
Thanks for staying.